Yeah, this afternoon is special afternoon for us, myself, Gilbert Jean-François, and yes, there's one thing I need to correct. The director said that I think he said he served as the treasurer for East Coast Conference, but now it's the associate treasurer. Jean-François was the treasurer there. Of course, you learn some things from him. And she was so accurate in saying, speaking to his passion for schools. That is definitely so. I have had the privilege also under him to be allowed to visit Dominica and St. Vincent and to go through all the schools with the then-director and ready. So, I just, that's an old picture of all the schools existing in Dominica and St. Vincent at that time. We spent a couple of days going from school to school because each school we gave a full day. And we just looked at the infrastructure, the whole programming, and of course, I concentrated on the finances for the school. And at the end of the day, each day, we would meet with the school board and give our report and recommendations and so on. And that was made very eye-opening exercise. So, that has really sparked my interest in schools and the operation because right back then, I noticed there were a number of low-hanging fruits, a number of projects that the schools could have undertaken, but just didn't. You know, the thing about this is, for almost all of us on this platform in this group this evening, we can be in a better financial position than we are in right now. Our schools are, similarly for our schools. The thing about that is, generally, unless finance is a challenge, we don't stop to give focus on it unless it's a challenge. If things are just flowing as you would want, you're buying stuff and you're getting by fairly easily. People do not stop to give deliberate attention to finance. And that is the thing about finance. Finance is something that needs focused attention. And so, as we go through this afternoon's session, I want us to remember that, and I will come back to it again. I have to mention it two or three times during this presentation because it is something that we often lack. And if you discuss with somebody who is doing well financially, they can tell you and mark out for you the path they took, the road they took, some of the decisions they made in getting to where they are financially. So, they will tell you about the kind of time, it didn't just happen. They didn't just arrive there, but it's something that they did not take. The financial growth, vibrant, everything does not take, they did not take it for granted. Similarly, for people who would retire. Some people retire and they're at that time and they're pretty satisfied and ready. And they're ready to move on with life because they've planned for it. The school is, when you're operating at a certain level, it has to be planned for. So, I wanna, I wanna move straight to some of the things we want to look at this afternoon as we talk about this whole market of finance. This is very important for us this afternoon. Are you seeing my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I'm not seeing none of it. I have to go to that. Managing school in this same financial environment, it's no financial environment. Covid is, Covid, I'm not sure if it's still new, it's running a year old already. But because of the enormous impact it has and the toll it has taken for lots of reasons, we still consider it new. It is so different from what our years of experience have taught us. Has taught us, so we still consider Covid and this new environment pretty new because of that. And we have to understand that as we look at our finances in the East Coast Conference, we have some goals that we have to go after. But we have some also admonition coming from the Bible. God says he knows the plans he has for us, plans to prosper us. Plans to prosper us. Plans to prosper us in our individual lives. Plans to prosper in the things we are engaged in, the organization that we developed. God says he plans to prosper, that's the plan he has brought. But so often, we don't sit back and really create ourselves under the guidance of God, a vision for where we want to go. But we have to, we have to create that vision. Now, when we create a vision, we have to take into consideration the whole environment. And we should not just limit our current resources when we create a vision. Because remember, it's where you want to arrive. That's where we see ourselves years down the road. It could be five years, it could be 10 years when you create a vision. And once you see where you're going and where you want to arrive. Okay, I think I succeeded in meeting the person, no problem. Yes, then you communicate, you communicate that vision. And it is so important for others to get that vision with us. Because if they don't see the vision, then it's hard for them to buy in, for you to get buy-in, and then get their support and they can pitch in. And not just ask, ask in support, say, "Okay, yes, I'm with you, I agree with you." None is more than that. Because you have to sit down now and plan how we're gonna get there, plan the road. How are you gonna get there? How are you gonna, one of the steps you're gonna take, what are the activities you're gonna put in place? And then finally, you add a procedure, you got a procedure. It takes, it doesn't, I mean, it's just very few things that come just by moving along, just by allowing time to flow. One of them is getting old. Whatever you do, you'll get, you're gonna get older tomorrow. You guys are watching, you can sit down in your bed all day, you're still gonna get older. You don't have to work for that. Or why you wanna make progress, cause effort, time to make that happen? So, I wanna start by us identifying our stakeholders. For every school, every school in Barbados, every school in Dominica, you have a number of stakeholders that you have to give attention to. And I'm not just saying that this group, we're gonna highlight a group that, well, they're stakeholders, but it's not just, you're sitting on the sideline and just looking on. But of course, you see students, they're very active, they're part of your stakeholder group. They have a critical part to play. And there's so much role, so many roles for each of these groups. Your students is the one who will really market your school. They're your best marketing tool for any school. Your students is the best marketing tool. And the way we treat them, the way we relate to them, what we do for them, and how they perform, all of that will speak about your school. Faculty and staff. If you get dedicated faculty and staff, you know you can go sailing with that. Board members, they gotta be on board, they're a critical part. Because they don't manage it into their favor, but they give overall governance. And they're gonna make some critical decisions that are gonna affect your school. So, board members. And then we have the churches. The churches can play a critical part. And listen, I mentioned it a little later on in the presentation, but I wanna mention it here again. That meant you have a school functioning with you. And society is looking up to that school. Even your churches, if you're proud and they wanna identify with that school, and they support the school easier. There's the organization, your mission, our conference, your conference. They're an important stakeholder. They give subsidy to your school, they're part of your management team. They make decisions that will affect your school, so they're important. Corporate citizens, of course, I mentioned that almost twice, I think businesses, corporate citizens. Those are individuals outside of your school, they don't do the management, but they can play a role and we have to intentionally engage them. We're gonna talk a little more about that. Of course, the government. The government also be cool, they do things. In some places, the government pays, so it's part of their expenses. The government gives concessions when you wanna input stuff. The government does a number of things. In some places, the government even sends students to your school and then they turn around, pay for those students. Because you know, in any country, the government is the one who has the responsibility for educating our students. And so, they, they take it, some governments take their responsibility very seriously. And so, they pay for their students even when they go to a private institution. Alumni is a group that we should never, ever neglect. There are lots of folks who pass through your school and they are proud of it. In the first place, you made their experience so memorable while they were there, the way you were treated. And after they leave, you continue to follow them and talk with them, interact with them, communicate with them. Because they can become a critical element. By the fact, the alumni can come up with ideas that you either as a school board or school management, not even thinking about. Student can just come together, encourage them to form an association. Use your head now and allow them to just come up with their ideas, how they can give back, how they can help your school. That works miracles for any school. Success, I just make a quick pitch on that because success in a school is intentional. It starts, it's never accidental, it's very intentional. And I gave, I gave my story over and over again about this teacher in a particular school. In school that he was at, he was in a, not fully ghetto, but a downtown area, neglected area. The poorer part of the city. And this is somebody I know, of course. But this teacher was so diligent with his students, very diligent. He thought they'd come in entrance class. And even though they began to perform well, he was not satisfied. And there's a problem with that sometimes. I mean, we perform at a certain level, we begin to sit down and say, "Let's maintain this." But school is not about maintenance, we always have to keep striving. When this guy success.
Mr. Henry, just one thing too. Quite a number of people have said that they have a difficulty with audio. I'm not sure what you could do on your end, do you have a question?
With audio?
It is not going up and down. I'm not sure what is happening, but it is not us.
Okay, I'm setting up a mic here, so you should be able to. Okay, let me try exchanging the screen. You hear me any clearer?
You're very strong.
Excellent.
Let me see if I can do anything more.
No. Why are we sitting down?
Okay, coming up there, coming up there. Um, like, okay. One sec, one sec. One sec, you hearing me now?
I think people need to say in chat whether they're hearing you. Because several people said today they were not hearing, they are just muzzling, so I'm not sure.
Muzzling?
Okay, somebody said, "Much better, perfect." My said, "Very good," my said, "Loud and clear." But for some reason, I'm not hearing.
You're not hearing?
I'm not hearing.
You're not hearing?
Loud and clear, other person said, "Much better."
Loud and clear?
Very good.
Okay, might say loud and clear, someone saying, "Perfect."
But I don't, I can hardly hear.
But you can hardly hear. Very good, very good.
I'm not sure what's happening. Can some other person send me chat what you're experiencing? My said, "Excellent." Okay.
Excellent, the voice is clear, he can continue there, perfect.
My said, "Excellent," so.
Crystal, Crystal, call Flo, Ms. Maglo.
All right. Okay, go ahead now.
Okay. All right. Yeah, we, yes.
Yeah, much better, very good.
Much better? Great, all right.
Very, very good now.
Okay, okay, I'm glad for that. Yeah, I was saying that this guy had his, in this, in this environment, and he was a very diligent teacher. And he was giving a lot of attention. He kept his students in late, the common entrance class, especially when they were going up for the exam. Months before the exam, he really worked personally. He took it as a personal challenge for the success of his students. And lo and behold, at the end of the day, when those students wrote the common entrance exam, the CSEC, not CSEC, the, yes, the Second School Entrance Examination, 100% passed, the next year, same thing, 100%. And not pass with ordinary grades, you know, they were really high. And this was not a school that was getting any kind of big respect until the exam, this exam. And everybody now was now attracted to this school. People were now leaving the city, the heart of the city, and all those high-flown areas and go down to the school because of this teacher. Coincidentally, coinci- coincidentally, his name was Mr. Success. But he did a, he did a fantastic job. And so, the school began to develop an efficient system. And here is where the test comes in. Because when, if, if, if at the end of the month, your students come in, you charge them a fee, about 40% of that, of the students pay their fees, your teachers get salary at the end of the month, the conference pitch in and pay their portion, and everybody's get their salary and things. And when you want money, you know, there seem to be money available to do some of the small things you wanna do. Then, nobody gives attention to how we can improve the system, how can we improve efficiency? Well, not nobody, sometimes very few. But I wanna there say that at any school.
Am I the only one who is not hearing? I'm not hearing?
You're not.
You're the only one.
You are not.
You're the only one.
Check, check your system, please. I would appreciate that.
Okay, it's going very well.
Can you speak again?
Yes, I'm saying.
Happening anyway.
Let me, let me see if I can turn you up, but this is very high. You're not hearing me?
That works, boy.
I'm hearing Pastor Lester loud and clear, but Pastor Betty, I'm not hearing you clearly.
I'm hearing Pastor Betty clearly.
Okay.
I need to get internet that works.
Yes. Okay? Yeah, okay, yes. Let me see if I can, I can speed this up a little, since we lost some time. Bottom line is, all of you know what a strategic plan is. And that plan is to tell you where you wanna be. So, your vision would help you to frame this strategic plan. And it helps also because it limits your rebuild, if any. If you wanna do something, sometimes when people don't have a strategic plan, they, they, they even engage in capital expenditure. And they put something here, and two years later, they say, "Oh, no, we shouldn't have done this here. We wanna put it on the other side." So, there's another cost of moving that. And even for the people and the staff you want to have, it's based on your plan that you would know what are the critical staff members that you need to get on board if you wanna the school to be where it wanna be in five years. Now, the thing about this is, once you have a plan, you know where you're going, and then it's a one-time expense. And you can also plan way ahead of time. This is about finance also, finance. Now, you can get just about any money you want, it's just that if you can give yourself time. If you want right now, if you want an additional $10,000 for your school, for yourself, whatever, or $50,000. If you say, "I want it tomorrow," it becomes a little difficult. It's possible, but it's difficult. If you say, "I want it next week," it is less difficult, it's still difficult, but it's doable. But if you say, "I want it next year," that is not a difficult thing. It becomes easier as you give yourself time because you can plan a number of strategies. And so, when we think about efficient system, we want to begin by thinking, what is it is our, I wanna pitch this in right now, our break-even point at the school. Break-even point, meaning that your enrollment and so on can satisfy or meet all your financial needs. What is it, what does that enrollment look like? And so, we talk about the, the expenses. You can look at your staff, look at what are your other expenses. And these are the critical expenses you have to meet every month. Based on that expenses, on those expenses. Your student fee, what you charge, multiplied by the number of students to be equal to that expense, that is your break-even point. I'm just trying to simplify that, your break-even point. And so, if you, if you divide that total expense by your student fee, it tells you what enrollment you need to have, your break-even enrollment. And so, when you have a break-even, you know that, okay, for us to really meet our expenses without struggle, without going anywhere for anything else, we'd have to get this enrollment, this amount of students. Once we drop below that, then you have to find the finance to supplement what is coming in from fees. Fees is still a big part of your income. This is the school and you're giving, you're giving a service and the fee for that service, it's important. But even for that basic level, basic type of income, sometimes we don't give a lot of attention to that. Few schools, few schools can record that they, they have 100% of their students paying their fees in, at the due date or within the particular quarter, few schools. Now, what has happened is that Covid environment has made all of these even more, well, has exacerbated the situation, has caused things to really, to expose some of the weaknesses in our system. You, do you know? We most, well, we belong to churches and so on. For churches, now that we find ourselves in this Covid environment, we are huddling together, pulling ideas, how can we now do our collection, collection of that and offering from individuals? But you know, there are conferences who have recorded increased incomes since Covid, even though they're in lockdown, they have recorded increased income, imagine that. Folk not coming in a physical church building, but they have increased their income. All because long before Covid, they have had online giving and all their members were part of that. And, and those members, as they came, some came to church and they threw an offering, and some of them did, and most of them did it online. And even those who did it online when they came to church, they still give. And what happened is that because they didn't come to the church now, means they saved more in travel and transportation costs and so on, and they give more offering. So, those folk are now realizing even more giving with this situation. But unless you plan for these things and you vision ahead, look ahead, then it wouldn't happen accidentally. So, measuring the break-even. Yes. We can look at the expense and the potential, and we know, we should know the capacity of our schools. Each of us should know the capacity. How much will it take? At what point your school would say, "Well, we can't take more students." If you look at your potential and your total expense, you may know what is the fees required. Or you have to begin to do some other things. And I probably would wanna look at this because, first of all, our fees is an integral part of our whole income structure. And we have to give this attention. Now, what has happened in this Covid season, Covid period and this environment, folk are not coming to a physical building, in some places that is, and individual parents and so, well, say, "We have more to do now, you need to decrease your fees." But we know that teachers are working as hard or even harder in some cases with this new environment. So, what do we do? There are some new and novel ideas we now need to adopt so that we can realize the same level or even improve increased income. And we have to also, in Covid and non-Covid environment, look to diversify a little our income. And I wanna bring in my friend here, I stopped sharing his video. Because there, there are some ideas which I will share with you, but I want him to share some additional ideas with you at this time is my good friend and colleague, Mr. Gilbert Jean-François.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you Pastor Henry and Sister Maglo for inviting me to this call. As they said before, Adventist education is dear to my heart. And it grieves me sometimes when, when I see where we're at. And this afternoon, I just want to share some ideas and hope that we could take something away from them. Let me just share my screen. Pastor Henry was saying that one of the things we have to do is stabilize tuition, and tuition will always be our mainstay. So stabilizing tuition is something we need to focus on, and we need to keep thinking of how we could increase student enrollment. And this afternoon, I want to state that one of the things we need to start thinking of is product differentiation. What would make somebody send their child to a Seventh-day Adventist school and not to any of the schools that people consider top schools on the island? At one time, we said we taught Bible, but some other schools teach Bible now. And so we need to start thinking of what would differentiate us, what would make us different? And we need to start thinking of artificial intelligence, we need to start thinking of computer repairs and maintenance, we need to start thinking of computer programming, we need to start thinking of robotics, we need to start thinking of maybe some of the other languages. We need to differentiate our school, so that, I know in Barbados, there used to be a good, a good music program. We need to start the band in school and the orchestra, the choir, things that would differentiate our school, so that when somebody thinking of which school should I send my child to, they could think of the Seventh-day Adventist schools as the number one. In the primary schools, maybe we could look at languages. I know some, I know in Barbados primary, they used to teach the Spanish, maybe we could include the French, things to differentiate us. So if we're going to increase student enrollment, and we're going to make school fees the foundation for our income, we need to differentiate. The other thing we need to do is quality, and Pastor Buddy spoke to that a little bit. We need to provide quality, and what I've found is that what comes with quality is assessment. And so there need to be ongoing assessment of teachers, ongoing assessment of quality of delivery. So we need to put an assessment, a rigid assessment program in place. So I'm saying if we're going to increase student, if we're going to make tuition the foundation, the mainstay of our school, before anything else, we need to do product differentiation, and we need to put in quality inside there. And they say, in order to ensure we have quality, we need to keep measuring it, we need to keep testing for it. So that's one, increasing tuition, increasing student enrollment so that we could have increased tuition. And if we provide quality, we might be able to charge a little more as well. The other thing we could look at is scholarships. And sometimes we want to look at people asking donors for a hundred percent of school fees. I worked out the Dominica Secondary School, and I'm saying if you could get a sponsor, somebody to give a hundred dollars a month, it will sponsor, sponsor a child for a year. In Saint Lucia, the former principal there, she, she was, she was getting two people to sponsor a child. So if you could get two people to give you fifty dollars per month, you could have one child sponsored. So scholarships, and it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be asking for the total amount from one person, it could be giving a parent a fifty percent, so all they have to focus is the other fifty percent, or even a twenty-five percent. So in Dominica, if you could get one person to give twenty-five dollars a month, a parent could have a twenty-five, a child could have a twenty-five percent scholarship. One of the things I've, I have come across in the Seventh-day Adventist Church, as we seek donations, there are some principles that we need to adhere to, and one is that we need to go back and say thank you. So if you're going to keep, and I always tell the story of, after we built the Barbados primary school, I went to a Marinafa International, because Marinafa helped us build that school. I took a trip to San Francisco to attend a Marinafa convention, and they had a compelling drive for funds. And I had taken with me some money to shop for clothing, and the, the request was so compelling that I donated those funds. But by the time I got back to Barbados, I got a handwritten note from the chairman of the board saying thank you for my contribution. A few weeks later, I got a receipt and a letter saying what had been done with my money. And after a few weeks later, maybe the next month, I got another letter asking me to contribute to another program, and it had a self, self-addressed envelope. When we receive donations, we need to say thank you, we need to see what we did with the money, and then people would be more willing to give again. So, we're saying the first thing we need to do is to make tuition a bedrock for our revenue, for our income, and then we're saying that we could ask. But as we ask, we need to say thank you, and we need to see what we did with the funds. One of the things we could implement is a monthly newsletter, a quarterly newsletter, where we keep letting people know what we're doing, what the needs are, and that would encourage people to give. Last night, we had, last night, we had our business meeting, and one of the things I observed is that even if our revenue dropped, there were some areas that increased. So, offering, combined budget dropped, building fund dropped, EY increased, community service increased than to the previous year, needy poor increased, Sabbath school increased. What I observe at my church is that people prefer to give to projects, they prefer to give to a cause than to just give money, they didn't give, they, in their minds, combined budget is just giving money. Building fund, I guess no building was going on, so they didn't give. But they saw Sabbath school as a cause, they saw needy poor as a cause, they saw community service as a cause. So what we need to do as we seek for donations, which I think it's a little, a little here, a little there could add up, I think it's an area we could focus on. But we need to create a cause, we need to create something to give to. Going back to Barbados, when we built the Barbados Secondary School, we built it without money, but the Barbadians rallied around it because it was a cause, it was something they had longed for, and it was happening, and people would leave their work at four o'clock, and they would come and work till ten o'clock in the night because it was a cause. So we're saying that number one is that we need to increase our enrollment, and two ways we could do that is by differentiating the product, and the other thing we could do is to provide quality. We're saying number two, we could seek donations, we could find scholarships for individual students, and as we find those scholarships, we need to keep the donors aware of how this child is doing, send them reports so that they could be aware. The first thing we could do is product sales. We could look for products that we could sell. And then one of the products I have here is bread. I don't know for Barbados, I don't know for Dominica, but in Saint Lucia, bread sells. Everybody eats bread at least twice a day for breakfast and for their, for their supper. Bread is a big item in Saint Lucia. And I have a friend who was making bread, but he was only baking it to order. And people would come all over Saint Lucia on a Thursday to buy one little loaf of bread from him for ten dollars. He would make sixty loaves, seventy loaves on one day, and then he would sell all of it, seven hundred dollars a day. I think we, we could look at bread again. I know Dominica had a bakery. They don't have one now, but we need to make quality bread, we can't make, we need to make healthy bread. Gluten-free bread, I know in Barbados, they import it from overseas, and it's very, very expensive. So maybe in Barbados, we could start that niche, gluten-free, gluten-free bread, healthy bread. We could leave out the butter, the oil, and, and the, and the shortening, so that the diabetics and the hypotensive people could enjoy it, but it has to be quality, it has to be different. And we could bake it to order, we don't have to bake every day, but making us seven hundred dollars twice a week could add up. So bread is, for me, could be a big item, it's something that people use all the time. The other thing we could do is water. And USC used a model. I worked with Pastor Shinasizido, who was then assisting with that product, project. And instead of going and set up a factory, and this is something that a lot of people, a lot of companies are doing, they're outsourcing, and instead of going and set up a, a, a factory and all of that, we could just have somebody brand water for us, put our labels on it, and we could distribute it. What I've found is that there is more money in distribution than in manufacturing. So we could go to the water, the, the bottling companies, and a lot of them would prefer that than for us setting up something to compete with them. We could say we're doing a project here, bottle water for us under our brand, and what I'm showing there is the USC brand, bottled water for us under our brand, and then we could distribute it. One of the things that we have is a captive market. We have church members who I believe can be loyal, if we give them good quality, good price, and they would prefer to buy water from us than to buy it from the other companies, even though it's the other company's water under our names. So we could look at water, pure and refreshing water. Everybody needs water, everybody drinks water, a lot of people buy water, so. So we're saying one, we could, we need to keep tuition as the bedrock, and the two ways we could do that is one through differentiation, and the other method is for quality, quality education. And we're saying that for there to be quality, we need to keep inspecting. They say if you'll provide quality, you need to keep inspecting, and the way we inspect is through assessment. We said that we could get donors and we could get scholarships, and we don't have to ask somebody for all, we could ask a few people for a little bit. We don't have to give parents a hundred percent scholarship, but we could meet them halfway, we could meet them a quarter. And then we said that we could get products for sale, we said one could be bread, another one could be water. And then we could look at health products. In Saint Lucia, there's a product, a product called moringa, and this is something that we could look at. I know most likely in Dominica, everybody might have a tree in their yard, so that might not be good for Dominica, but in Barbados, it could be a product, it could be a project on the farm at Old Berry. We could plant some moringa plants, and then we could dry them, and then we could capsule them, and then we could make some money. In Saint Lucia, they sell fifty capsules, sixty capsules for fifty dollars. And that's good money, and it's just a little bit of moringa in a capsule, so that's one, something we could look at. I have a friend in Saint Lucia who makes, he's into herbal medicine, and I also have one in Antigua, our brother Tila in Saint Lucia, our brother Lukin in Antigua, and they do, they put together a lot of stuff, like they have a, they've put together a capsule, they call it the flu bomb. And if you're coming down with the flu and you take that, you'll get well almost instantly. So I've spoken with both of them, and they are willing to work with you on how you could develop health products. Brother Tila in Saint Lucia, he puts together syrup. He could send you the formula, he could tell you how to do it, he's willing to zoom with you. Brother Luk is willing to assist you, give you some of the formulas. And he, they even, they are willing as well to tell you where you could get the supplies to do those. And you could put together some of those and sell to the members and sell to the public. So those are health products, and we have Adventist members, good Adventist members, who have embraced the health message, and they are willing to work with you towards producing those, so they'll tell you how to make the capsules and how to package them and how to sell them. And other, other health products as well, like the syrup, yes. Okay. It's COVID season, and there's another product that we, we want to recommend. Since COVID, I've only been, what I, what I've been doing is I go where the problem is, right? I want to solve the problem, so I go where the problems is. I operate two businesses in Saint Lucia, one was a learning institution, so, and I say was, because we've closed down the physical location, and what we did was bought a online learning management system, and we've taken that totally online. And the other one is sanitary and health, and our focus have been COVID, right? So we do hand sanitizers, we do soap, and one of the hand sanitizers that we do is a twenty-four hour, you could see it on the screen, hand sanitizer protector, and I think this is one thing you could look at, look at. I've spoken with the manufacturers, and they're willing to label for you and ship to you. So we say if we do two hundred, to start, you can, to test the market, if you purchase two hundred, the cost will be six hundred US, because they sell them for three dollars apiece. The freight to Dominica, we want to fly there, so by FedEx or DHL would be two hundred and eighty US. And because they're doing your own label for you, you'd have to pay an extra hundred US, it's fifty US, fifty US cents per label, and the service charge in Dominica, praise God, there is no duties of that on sun, sun, hand sanitizer, so there's only a four percent service charge, that'll be thirty-nine dollars and twenty cents. Your total investment would be one thousand and nineteen dollars and twenty cents. And we're saying so the individual cost would be five dollars and ninety-six US. The individual cost in EC would be thirteen dollars and eighty-five cents. You could make an eighty percent profit and sell it for twenty-five dollars, so you'll make twelve dollars on one, and in Saint Lucia, we sell it at thirty dollars, but right now, we have a sale going on at twenty-five dollars EC. So this is something you could look at, Barbados could look at it as well, and see if it's something, if they, if it's a venture, you want to part it in. And that's it. Any questions, any comments, or we'll let, I pass you back on to Pastor Henry. Thank you.
One question.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, Mr Jean-François? I just want you to emphasize more on the, on the benefit of having this hand sanitizer, how is it different from the others?
Okay. One of the things about this hand sanitizer, it uses a a technology called, it uses an ingredient called cycquad. And what cycquad does is that it attaches itself to a surface, and when it does that, it forms spikes, so that if a virus, bacteria comes on that surface, it breaks its membrane. So the hand sanitizer, because of that system, it lasts for twenty-four hours on your hand or ten hand washes, whichever comes first. So you don't have to keep using, most of the other hand sanitizers have alcohol, and alcohol does two things, once it dries your hand, And alcohol does two things, once it dries your hand, two, if you touch receipts or anything that is carbonized, um, that could, alcohol could allow it to enter your pores. So this is some of the benefits of this one, this one that has no alcohol. And it has um, moisturizers to moisturize your hand. The other thing alcohol does is, if we continue to use alcohol over a long time, because what alcohol does with viruses and bacteria is that it, it poisons it. And so what they would start doing is building immune, immunity against um, alcohol, and we could very well develop superbugs. But this one is, it's a, it's water base, and um, it stays on your hands long, so you, you don't need to put it once or twice on your hand. Something else I need to, I need to note, I want you to note though, that if after you put in it, you use alcohol, it will erase it. So what I do is I work with mine, so when I go to the stores, I use my own.
Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate that, that was very good.
There was a question in the chat. Or there is a question in the chat.
With regards to the scholarship, would it be granted specifically to Seventh-day Adventist students?
The scholarships would be for needy students, um, not really, it shouldn't be based on religion, we look for needy students. We need the non Seventh-day Adventist students in the school.
Yes.
And that's, that's another passion of mine. Adventist schools, we don't want to put tight money in Adventist schools, brother Pastor Henry, right? But we have, and we go, and we have non-Adventist students there, right? We have non-Adventist students there, we don't want to put tight money there. We have a captive audience, we have them five hours a day. But we will go and pitch a tent and spend hundreds and thousands of dollars to speak to people for one hour, you know, um, it's something that I'm having a challenge reconciling. To me, schools should be evangelistic centers, we need to put money inside there to make our students Adventists, to make our children Adventists, to make our non-Adventist students Adventists. We have a captive market, we have them for five years, but we don't want to put it there, it, it, it I don't understand it, Pastor.
I hear you, I hear you on that. Okay, let me just run uh, three or four more slides quickly. Since Mr. Javaswa has gone through those ideas, once I can't put anything close to it. Gilbert, you just wanna stop share for me for a minute? There's Javaswa? Gilbert?
Yes, I'm going to do that now.
Okay, thanks. Yes, so we have to begin to diversify how our income can form and what the source we can get money from. And um, thank you very much for that. That was awesome, thank you very much, those are practical ideas, and you know, you just have to see which one these ideas could fit in your setting. Because you could think about so many ideas, farming, some schools, some farming, catering, bakery, this is, I mentioned that already. Market day, market day is a great day, uniform making, some schools can make uniform for their children. Some have successfully run cafeteria, and some have found that cafeteria is an expense, that's because what I discovered in one of those cafeterias I looked at, is because they had somebody employed in the cafeteria, the main person in cafeteria, and their salary was attached to the cafeteria, and they paid their salary like everybody else, regardless if they sell anything or not. They just had a big salary, and there's a big overhead cost to the cafeteria. Cafeteria never seemed to be making money, but we have to do it differently. Online stores, and this, I wish I can elaborate on all of these ideas. Virtual programs, online classes, you can now begin to do additional things that you didn't do before, you can do that. And the thing about this is that you can source somebody from outside of your school to run some of these programs on your behalf. That is the beauty of this new environment, school enhancement, we gotta think about that. Classroom improvement, now sometimes the school, look at it, okay, we are a school, we respond for the improvement for each classroom, but if a teacher can take on that responsibility sometimes, they can do a fantastic job for you. You can equip your school with some particular items that are needful for the students, that would be a big asset. Computers and smartboards and so on, you can target individuals as donations for that for your school. It's not an everyday expense, so you can target donations for those things, things like that. You have, every, every class should have a project. Every class should have a project every year, every class. So and every student contributing to that, you have special projects, that is important. Schools itself, and these times, these times, you have to think about how do I share costs, sometimes share personnel. If you have somebody teaching a particular subject area in another school, now is the best time you can have that person do teaching of more than one school at the same time, a critical area. Especially if that teacher has the real knack and the skill in it, use that teacher, you can look at some of your best teachers in the education system now and begin to um, structure your program and curriculum in such a way that this teacher is allowed to teach more than one class at the same time. Or um, even share that teacher's skill with another school, that is, that is excellent, you can share the cost for such an individual. So you network with schools and you make it happen, your PT and your alumni, they have a major role to play, you give them some goals also. And you should have a positive visibility in the, in the community. Now, let me say this quickly, I was in Martinique, Dominica, you're close to Martinique. I was in Martinique, and I went to the school, I visited the school, the school has they are on the max, they're maxed out their enrollment. They're so attractive because, and the whole Adventist value is high. The students pay. And they perform well, those teachers, all of them are trained and dedicated for success. And they teach the children well, they're interested in students who are being and lawyers, doctors, you see, I mean, I see it in my own eyes, all those guys line up, all of the who is who, they wanted their children to go to that school, and they always and here what happened, I saw that a few years ago, I reached back when I realized that I had to do this presentation on Sunday gone. Just this past Sunday, to find out if that situation is the same, and it was confirmed, yes, it is so, why is it a little bit? Because the teachers are, are trained, and they are, and the school is a high performing school. So you cannot leave out academics out of the picture. That could put your school in the map. And it's in addition to academics, you do some other things, and Mr. Javaswa mentioned a few music and so on. Differentiating your program now, you, you're, you're building something that is not only different, but higher than what you have, you know, in the general community. I wouldn't have just spent a minute on this, because Mr. Javaswa already spoke to this, general fundraising, you know, you just have to identify individuals, deliberately sit and plan it, identify individuals who you think can make a good donation to your school. Identify that person, and then you cultivate them, you talk with them, interact with them, bring them to your school, bring them to your graduation to do things. Bring them in your school for special events and so on, so they can get connected to the school. You educate them about the school and what is happening and your plans and everything else. And when you see that you, you get their interest, then you can go for the kill and ask for a, a, a donation for a particular project, a particular item. And then, as Mr. Javaswa did elaborate, appreciation is gonna be a big thing, and that is why there has to be somebody, most of the ideas we have shared with you, there needs to be somebody who's gonna be the runner, who's gonna be the person who's gonna make it happen. And for this, you have to have somebody, because that person has to ensure, everybody who gives a donation, they are well appreciated, they are recognized, and you write them letters and express big appreciation for what they have done for your school. But there is a, just now, you can reach the folk outside of Barbados, outside of Dominica. And you can now have, the whole globe, the world now is open to you, to receiving finance or finding, you can reach anybody now, easier. Before it was available, but now it's even more easy, more easy to target folk who are way outside, the alumni now, you can call a Zoom meeting with your alumni right now, because where they are, now formally, we just thought about inviting them to your school. But now, but now, you can just call a Zoom meeting and invite them to your Zoom meeting. And you invite them, and you share with them the ideas, your goals, your plans, and so on for the school. Everybody's part of the schools, and once I'm invited to, I mean, and a school that I have been at, I'm happy to be there. And everybody wants to show they can contribute, they have moved on in life and they have accomplished so much, they wanna contribute. And I know that now is the opportune time, but all these ideas need working close, they need individuals who would drive them. And you have to plan for it, finance is intentional planning, it doesn't just happen by accident. I wish I can labor that, label on that, or labor on that so much more. Because for your personal finance, school finance, anyone, I saw it happening more than once, I went to school, I visited a school in New York, and they had one hundred percent collection of fees, because they had somebody on the phone going through lists, seeing who and who paid their fees, follow up with them, talk with them, walk, walk through them, okay, could you pay up fifty percent now and then do this, and they were just negotiating. That's for the few delinquent parents who did not come in on time. That person was salivating their responsibility, and they made it happen, I'm just saying, it's intentional, and it calls for deliberate effort to make it happen, but your school can become a success, even in this COVID time. Thank you very much, and I appreciate the contribution from Mr. Javaswa. Any questions, I'd be happy to share them, because we couldn't share with, share all the ideas we have, yes.
Okay, James Collier's hand is up, and let me use the opportunity to um, welcome our president to, to this forum. He is the chairperson of the Barbados Seventh-day Adventist Secondary School, and also the Athawaljon SDA Secondary School. We want to say that um, our president has been with us head and shoulder. And he has really motivated the church to continue to make very, very significant contributions to our schools in the East Caribbean Conference of Seventh-day Adventists. So one more, in our conference, we can see that our churches are playing a, a, a very active role financially through the IDC and other ways, and we want to really thank him for spreading that. We also have on our platform, our chairperson for the Temple SDA Primary School, Pastor James Collier, he'll ask his question. We also have Pastor Reed at the Bridgetown SDA Primary School, and Pastor Joseph from the Athawaljon SDA Academy. So we are so happy to have our, our chairpersons with us. And Mr. Ben joined us after we did the introduction, Mr. Ben, we are so happy to have you, he's the principal of the Bridgetown Seventh-day Adventist Primary.
Great, 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 lovely.
So we are well covered here this afternoon.
Madam Director.
When you have the president, you have everybody. So our question is coming now from Pastor James Collier. If you have any questions, we want to invite you to play them in the chat, so we can.
The president was about to say something.
Madam Director, I, I want to beg opportunity to speak now, since I have another meeting.
Okay, no problem.
No problem, Mr. President.
If you don't mind, I just want to express on behalf of the East Caribbean Conference our appreciation of the fact that the treasurer of our union took time out to give this presentation, the part I heard it was very, very, very good. And as usual, he's at that level, and I want to compliment him again for this afternoon's presentation. I, I just have a little issue, I do not know whether he made this point clear, but Mr. Jean Francois said something at the end of his presentation, which was also very good. That we are not putting tight money into the school, I believe that you would have said that we are at least up to ten percent between the primary and the secondary school of our ties. Also, in most of the conferences across this union, most of the conferences that run schools actually put in more than the policy allows. East Caribbean is putting as much as twenty-four percent of its tithing come into the, into schools, so I just thought that that point should be made clear, that the church is doing its part. And uh, the, the point that struck me in your presentation, where you talk about the break even point. And I think that is a significant point you made, which I hope that all concerned will reflect on that, and we do the necessary analysis to ensure that. So I want to thank you for that, uh, and I, I, I want to I wouldn't stay too much longer, because I have another meeting at seven. So I, I will just give you the, but thank you again for being with us. Thank the director for organizing this, this program, I'm very proud of her for organizing this program, I thank you ma'am, I thank you sir.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Um, yes, we do put tight money in the schools. I guess he was comparing that to what we do in evangelism, I was saying that, I guess the comparison is what he was making. But in, in the, the, the analysis, the, the formula of a break even, um, I need to say, you know, even when we arrive at that break even, we can fine tune that even more, because a school needs to look at what is their level of collection. For instance, if, if a school says, I have a hundred students, and based on these hundred students, this is the fee, how much of that do you collect on average, generally, every, every, every semester, every, every quarter? So you can fine tune your formula by using that, that is, the expenses by the student enrollment, by that collection, that's the ratio. And it would even bring you even further, we can do it, individual, take an individual school and crunch those numbers and tell them, this is, this is what your break even point is, because of your collection level. But um, yes, it's a good formula to look at, and it can give you a guide.
Okay, thank you very much, I'm Pastor Collier.
Yes, good evening everyone, I want to say that um, I enjoyed the presentation thus far. And I, I remember when I was a teacher at the Temple SDA Primary School, that um, these are some of the things that were mentioned to us, especially what Pastor Bertie said, that we should try, we must see the community as, as um, a stakeholder, and we should try to embrace every opportunity that we could find to be involved in the community. I would say like some of the ideas that Brother Jean Francois gave, practical ideas. I remember when it was Brother Jean Francois who gave me some ideas as to how to get the money for me to go to school. And so I was able to implement that idea, I didn't get all the money, but the rest is history. So I'm happy for this presentation, and by God's grace, at Temple SDA School, we're gonna try to implement some of these ideas, as a matter of fact, we started. But with all these ideas that we've got, we will be able to try to implement and some of them as much as possible, so we could increase our, our finances.
Okay.
Great, great to hear that, just look at the list of ideas and cherry pick, see which one applies to you better, which one you might do well in, and choose those.
Okay, do we have any more questions? You can raise your hand, or you can write it in the chat. Okay, I see, I see that we are well fed. What I, what I really like about the presentation is the practical nature. You can go and implement. And um, our schools, we are, we are very, um, very, very, very happy, the department is very, very happy for the presentation this afternoon. I, I know we can look at bread on a Friday, we can look at the bottom of the water, we can try to work. we can try to work harder on our product differentiation. And there are some things that we just have to do immediately as we endeavor by God's grace to improve our finances. And like what Pastor Henry kept saying, we cannot do it overnight. We need to have a vision for what you really want out of our schools. And there are no questions, because I think you were extremely clear this afternoon. So you have given us enough tools to implement. And by God's grace, he who gave us the command to begin schools will work hard to maintain the schools that are under our charge. So on behalf of the department, Pastor Henry and Brother Jean-François, thank you so very much for spending your time and for giving us the practical ideas. If you need to make contact with any of the presenters, you may let me know. I know Brother Jean-François gave us a challenge. He has already made contact with persons who are ready to help us on the, on the health initiatives. When we do things that are new, I know it brings, it stimulates more interest. So any board member, any board who has the interest in reaching out to any of the presenters for further details on what they have presented, I would be very, very happy to facilitate. So thank you very much. Somebody is asking for the PowerPoint. Brother Jean-François and Brother Henry, you, I would appreciate if you are able to send me the
Sure, 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 no problem.
And then share it with all the board members or the person.
Sure, no problem. I just want to say that even as you do fundraising, it is a lot, lot easier. If you have a project and you're asking for funds, if you're saying, you write up your project, do your full proposal, how, there's a plan, your distribution, everything else. And you say, okay, this is what is going to start, this is going to help us to start this project. It is easier to find funding to start a project. Than if you just tell somebody, give you money to run your school like that. They know that tomorrow it's, that would melt, but your project would last for you for a long time.
That is true. Okay. So thank you very much again. And we will call on you if we need any extra assistance as we try to make our schools sustainable. So now I invite Pastor Joseph, he's a chairperson of, he's a vice chairperson of the Athol John SDA Academy to offer our closing prayers. And thank you, board members, for turning out. I am happy that many of us were on the platform this afternoon. And things can only get better with you doing the very, very best that you can. Somebody has a question. So before the prayer, Dr. Dr. Phillips?
Good night, Dr. McGlore. And thanks to the presenters for their presentation. I just wanted to ask if there were any specific strategies for clearing debt, the school debt? Or you have, if you may have a school that is just not operating expenses, but you have to clear debt?
Oh yeah, sure. I think my friend, Mr. Jean-François, has written a whole book on debt, about that probably individual getting rid of your debt. Yes, you have to analyze it that if now it's something you don't just push one side. But now you just identify who is the creditors, who the person you owe the debt to. And then you negotiate. You negotiate for that debt. You negotiate a timeframe for it. If you just leave it like that, some debts even grow on you. But when you bring something into focus, then you can then make intentional effort and tell yourself, okay, it can take two years to wipe out this debt, three years. And you can even negotiate further, depending on who is the creditor in each case. In one case, I remember the school had a debt and it was to another church organization. And it was just there in their books, this liability. So they went to them and they approached them and said, listen, we want to get, we want to deal with this debt, but this is our financial situation, we'll do it with time. And that entity was so happy that they said to them, now, every dollar you pay on this debt, we will wipe off a dollar. In other words, they're paying them 50% only. And they gave them a timeframe in which they need to do it. And it was done. But debt needs to be addressed intentionally. And then you can do specific things. And you know, there's a variety of debt, it depends on to whom that debt is owed and what arrangement. But you have to sit down and address it, you know, focus on it and address it and decide, here, I'm going to deal with this debt over a year period, over a two-year period. And it can work easily. But if I know the, if you know the nature of the debt, makes it easier. If it's a debt that carries with it interests, you'd have to address that force, of course. Some debts don't carry interest, but some carry interest. You have to address those that are growing on you. You have to address that force.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're most welcome. Okay, so at this time, we will ask Pastor Joseph to say a prayer to end our very, very productive meeting.
Let us pray. Oh heavenly Father, we want to thank you so much for you being God. You are Creator and sustainer of all. And all the gold and silver belongs to you. And so we, we have been at your feet today, learning from you how to improve our financial situations. And so Lord God, we want to thank you. Want to thank you for your servants, whom you have used. Henry and Brother Jean-François, we want to thank you so much for them. And thank you for the wisdom that you have given to them and that they would have imparted to us today. Also want to thank you for all the members of staff at the school who are present, principals. Thank you for the director. We want to thank you for the board members. And we pray of God that at which we have learned to be able to implement and bring financial success to the various institutions that we represent. We ask of God that as we seek to do so, that your Holy Spirit would guide us into choosing what is best and into executing them, even with the perfection of heaven. We ask of God that your will be done on earth, as it is in heaven, as it relates to our schools. In Jesus' name, amen.
I mean, God bless.
Thank you very much again, Dr. McGlore, for the privilege. Thank you, everybody, being here.
Thanks again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pastor James Collier, can you check your WhatsApp message, please, from me? Pastor James Collier. So thanks everyone, have a very pleasant evening. And I look forward to work with all of us as we try by God's grace to energize our schools financially. We can do it. I'm sure we can. Yes.
It's very, very doable. Yes, it's can be done, can be done.
I really love the practical examples that you give. It's like you can start tomorrow. Yes. Okay, yeah. So thanks again. Say hi to your wife and Pastor, Pastor Henry.
Sure, sure will do, sure will do.